Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley. Today is March 19th, 2019. Our first presentation is a business spotlight, Jitters Coffee. Councilmember Cabrera will present.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are recognizing a District Four business, they're brand new. I was just there the other day, it's been about a week or so, and I really love, it's brand new, so it's nice and clean, but also you use a lot of wood and I'm into carpentry and all of that. So, I really love the atmosphere there, when I walked in, I was welcomed, you know, the customer service was really good and the coffee was really good. So tonight, we are recognizing Jitters Coffee, located at 16170 Paris Boulevard. And they provide a relaxed atmosphere, delicious fresh baked pastries, innovative Red Bull infused drinks, and amazing coffee at affordable prices. With so many amazing options, patrons are sure to find something they'll love. Jitters staff take great pride in providing excellent customer service and quality products at affordable prices. Owners Ronald Hahn and Jeffrey Platt also believe in giving back to the community by getting involved with the local schools and through various community events. You too can be a part of something great by impacting families in need through the Coffee for a Cause mission. For every pound of coffee sold, 10 pounds of food is provided to local food banks. I did not know about that, thank you for that. Be sure to stop in or drive through, Jitters is sure to have something for you. I delivered that a little wrong, but today, we recognize Jitters Coffee with this business spotlight video. Please roll the video.
Jitters Coffee, a coffee shop that gives a double shot of quality. We offer top shelf coffee at a great price, root hot or cold. You won't find a better cup of joe. Not a coffee connoisseur? Then try our Red Bull infusions to energize your day. We also have delicious pastries and sweets baked in-house or flown in from the best bakeries in the country. Jitters Coffee, come on in and enjoy your jitters.
And tonight, we have representing Jitters Coffee, Mr. Jeffrey Platt, if you can please join me here at the mic. Of course, of course. And on behalf of the city, we would like to present you with this certificate for your business spotlight. And also, we have a flash drive here for you with the actual file for the video, so you can do that for all your marketing and everything. And if you'd like, you can share a few words and greet.
So, we're grateful to be in the City of Moreno Valley and we look forward to seeing you all down there for a cup of coffee and a good snack. And we're just really excited about being in Moreno Valley and we look forward to doing more business. We have about 19 other locations to open up over the next three years. And so, we've made Moreno Valley our home place, so we look forward to it. Awesome, thank you.
Are we going down there from some good coffee? Let's give them another round of applause. And thank you for doing business in Moreno Valley. Our second presentation is an additional business spotlight, Cosmic Ice Cream, which will be presented by Councilwoman Thornton.
Attention all intergalactic ice cream lovers. Cosmic Handcrafted Ice Cream has been sent from a galaxy far, far away to delight Moreno Valley residents of all ages by taking everyone's favorite frozen treats to new dimensions. Cosmic is mixing out of this world creations like Galaxy Milkshakes, Space Trash Sundays with traditional ice cream shop favorites like Banana Splits and Chocolate Dip Bananas. They even offer Latino snack favorites like Mango Nados, Tostolicos, and crazy cucumbers filled with sweet spicy goodness like Chamoy. So, if you are curious about any of these wondrous snacks like Ice Cream Nachos, Martian Sawyer, or Flying Saucer Waffles, then hop into your spaceship and set your tractor beams to 14475 Moreno Beach Drive in Suite 104 and find out why today, we are recognizing Cosmic Handcrafted Ice Cream with this business spotlight video. Please roll the video.
Cosmic Ice Cream has launched the tastiest treats in the entire galaxy. At Cosmic Ice Cream, you can choose from an infinite selection of customized snacks and frozen delights. Our mission is to navigate the depths of the freshest fruits and finest ingredients to send your taste buds into orbit. Cosmic Ice Cream, handcrafted and out of this world.
Wow. That is an amazing video. Representing the business tonight is owner Maribel Posados, would you please join me at the mic? Hello. Congratulations, nice to meet you. It is my pleasure to present the Business Spotlight Certificate in USB to Cosmic Handcrafted Ice Cream. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Well, first off, I just want to say thank you to the council members for nominating us and a huge thank you to the City of Moreno Valley for allowing us to do business here. Hopefully, you guys get a chance to go down there, explore all the treats that we have. Also, a huge thank you to Stephanie from Moreno Valley Matters for always helping us.
I love you.
Love you too. And just thank you guys for allowing us to do business, appreciate it.
Cosmic Ice Cream, thank you so much for doing business in Moreno Valley. Let's give them another round of applause. The next presentation is a recognition of Corporal Rafael Victoria as a 2018 Moreno Valley Police Department Officer of the Year. Councilmember Thornton will present.
The City Council of the City of Moreno Valley greatly values our public safety personnel and as such, we are proud to recognize Corporal Rafael Victoria as the Moreno Valley Police Department Officer of the Year for 2018. Corporal Victoria has been widely praised by his peers for his professionalism, unparalleled work ethic, and ability to problem solve while handling multiple tasks. The list of achievements in difficult cases that Corporal Victoria has solved. Corporal Victoria has never shielded away from difficult or lengthy tasks, which demonstrates Corporal Victoria's deep-seated dedication to the safety and security of Moreno Valley residents. On behalf of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, I would like to present you with the Certificate of Recognition and wish you congratulations on being named the 2018 Officer of the Year for Moreno Valley Police Department.
I appreciate the council and our administration at the station there. So, we do what we do because we have a heart for it, so I appreciate it.
Corporal Victoria has done an outstanding job for us at the PD. He's a true warrior, he's a true guardian. He does a great job protecting the city and he deserves every bit of this. So, engraved set of handcuffs for you to remember this moment. Good work.
Congratulations Corporal Victoria. If we can give him another round of applause for his dedication to Moreno Valley. The following presentation is a recognition of Mary Watts as a Moreno Valley Police Department Classified Employee of the Fourth Quarter, 2018. Councilmember Cabrera will present.
Thank you so much, congratulations. So, tonight, we are also recognizing Moreno Valley Police Department Classified Employee of the Fourth Quarter, Mary Watts. And Mary has been working in several positions in Moreno Valley Police for a while now and her ability to jump into any task that is asked of her without hesitation, along with her abundance of knowledge, makes her integral to the functioning of MVPD. Anybody who has the pleasure to work with Mary will attest that she is a calming presence and someone who never hesitates to help in any way that she can. Mary, in recognition of your being named as a Classified Employee of the Fourth Quarter for 2018, I present you with this Certificate of Recognition on behalf of the City Council. And we are truly lucky to have someone as dedicated as you, working here in our city with the police department, and we just want to thank you and congratulate you for that as well. Congratulations again.
Just want to say, I feel honored to receive this prestigious award. I'm thankful for the opportunity for working for the great city of Moreno Valley under the outstanding leadership of Lieutenant Commander LeLavere and Lieutenant Kohler and SOA Susan Taylor. I'd like to thank my husband, sons, and daughters for their great support and love. And most of all, I'm grateful for the Lord's many blessings in my life. I thoroughly enjoy what I do at the Moreno Valley Police Department. Along with the rest of the front office staff, I'm ready to assist the customers of the city. Thank you again for this recognition. And for those who were wondering, I'm wearing vintage Ann Klein and my jewelry is by Sheriff Bianco.
Thank you to our fine leadership here at Moreno Valley Police Department for putting forth these candidates and awardees. Let's give them another round of applause. Okay, that brings us to our final presentation. Last but not least, is a commendation, recognizing Southwest Veterans Business Resource Center. I will do the presentation and I would like to ask Councilmember Thornton to accompany me.
Don't be shy now, they're not gonna bite. We hope. One big happy family.
Wonderful. Good evening, as many of you know, the City of Moreno Valley recently hosted the Veterans and Small Business Summit in our ballroom. With the many resources that the city dedicates to recognizing our local veterans, including the Veterans Recognition Banner, the Paver Program, and the Veteran Focused Workshops at the Employment Resource Center, the city's partnership with US Vets to gather supplies for local homeless veterans. We care about our veterans, so when the Southwest Veterans Business Resource Center asked to bring the Veterans and Small Business Summit to Moreno Valley, we were thrilled to accommodate the request. The City Council would like to present this commendation to the Southwest Veterans Business Resource Center. Here tonight to accept the commendation is Dr. Jorge Chavarin. And he's already here. Okay, so let me, we're gonna get the commendation and it reads as follow. Southwest Veterans Business Resource Center, whereas the City of Moreno Valley recognizes a need to increase the public's awareness of Department of Veterans Affairs, verified veteran-owned businesses in a show of support for our veterans and whereas the ultimate goal of the Southwest Veterans Business Resource Center is to eradicate veteran homelessness by empowering veterans with the necessary tools to transition into successful, productive enterprises to ultimately benefit all Americans. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby commend the Southwest Veterans Business Resource Center for their tireless efforts to bring the Eighth Annual Veteran and Small Business Summit to Moreno Valley and for their efforts to empower our local veterans. We would also like to recognize some of the individual volunteers who worked so hard to bring this event to Moreno Valley. And we have Evelyn Cuevas, Cindy Lemke, Valerie Vandevere, Dean Vandevere, Dr. Jorge Chavarin, and Albert Guzman. Thank you so much for your service and dedication to bring the Veterans and Small Business Summit to Moreno Valley. And I also want to thank our staff that makes this event so successful. And it was walking room only with all the vendors that you were able to gather for this event. And thank you for, to our leadership, including our, or beginning with our city manager, for being a voice for the veterans and accommodating their need for the CRC. So, thank you. And here we go with the commendation. Here you go, Dr. Chavarin, if you would like to say some words.
I would. Well, first off, thank you. Thank you for the prestigious honor, it's truly a blessing. You know, here at our Southwest Veterans Business Resource Center, clearly, you can see we're a family, right? And given that ideology, you know, we embrace everything, anything that comes our way, right? So, here Moreno Valley, what we'd like to believe and what we know is that you are advocates of the veterans and we appreciate that, we truly appreciate that. In saying that, can we please give a round of applause to Moreno Valley citizens? Thank you. And we look actually forward to next year's upcoming event, the Ninth Annual Summit. It's gonna be held April 1st, 2020. Again, thank you for the prestigious honor, it was a blessing.
So, we're gonna do some pictures now, but if we can have the rest of the council join us. Thank you so much to Southwest Veterans Employment Resource Center for all the work that you do and I love your vision of making sure that there's no veteran that's homeless and that you look forward to employing them and providing all the tools they need so that they can have employment and we can end homelessness. That concludes our special presentations, let's give another round of applause to Southwest Veterans. And remember to put April 1st, 2020 as a next summit on your calendars. And that concludes our special presentations, we'll reconvene at 6 o'clock, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Service District, City as Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, the Board of Library Trustees. I believe there's one more. And the Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. Today is March 19th, 2019, and it's about 6 o'clock PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our city manager, Tom DeSantis. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Dr. Eddie Og from Heartbeat of God International Ministries.
Good evening, please join me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a pastor here? You can step forward, please.
Good evening all, let us pray. God of all creation, we stand before your presence right now and I solemnly call thy presence among these distinguished men and women of Moreno Valley whom have been chosen to oversee the affairs of this city. Father, I call for peace. I call for love among them. I call for wisdom and I call for understanding. Father, even in the midst of argument, give them understanding. Give them strength that they may draw wisdom out of the argument. My tan everlasting God, it is their duty to make Moreno Valley great. But it is through your wisdom and your empowerment that will make this to come to pass. Even as I pray for the councilmen, I also pray for the law enforcement through the arachan files who leave their home every day to make sure that all the laws that will keep a city in peace is being transposed, putting their lives in danger. Father, I pray that you give them strength, give them courage, and to give them safety. Even the residents of Moreno Valley who are here today to testify about their success in whatever business that has been given to them to handle, Father, I thank you that there will be peace and your presence will not depart until they find the answer to what they have in common to the benefit of Moreno Valley. Father, I thank you. Make Moreno Valley great. Make County of Moreno Valley great. Make California great. Make United States of America great. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor and thank you City Manager. City Clerk, roll call please.
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Thornton.
Present.
Councilmember Marquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembaca.
Here.
Let the record reflect, Mayor Gutierrez is absent.
Staff introductions, please.
Pat Haquez Nade, City Clerk.
Regina Flores, Senior Deputy City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kuzanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Rick Sansomire, Community Development Director.
David LeLavere, Acting Police Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Director of Human Resources.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you. And before anyone says anything, no, we do not have a new councilperson. So, Dr. Thornton, can you introduce your guest, please?
Yes, I would like to introduce Guadalupe Witron. She is a graduate student at California Baptist University, pursuing her Master's of Social Work and she is shadowing me for the day, so I want to thank her for taking the time out here and so that's why she's sitting here.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Reminder, the city is currently offering Spanish translations, so if anyone needs that, we have translators in the back. Tenemos traductores si lo necesitan, atrás. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards other, especially towards the individual at the podium who's speaking. As a council, we embrace and support the First Amendment right of free speech, including everyone, everyone's right to speak at this meeting and share his or her views about issues concerning our city. But, we can accomplish more as a city and as private citizens by being civil and respectful toward one another in this meeting. Finally, I ask that speakers, bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree with a comment. Public comment on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff reports and city council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda under the jurisdiction of the city council may speak next. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. There is a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer or to the city council. The city clerk will call three names at a time. Please move to the front of the room when you hear your name. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council staff will not respond during public comment. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments or by our city manager. City Clerk, do we have any speakers today?
Yes, we have 12, 13 for non-agenda items. We'll start with Roy Blackard, Alicia Bridge, Nancy Salgado-Renteria.
Okay, if all three of yous can move up and then we'll call the next three. Go ahead, Mr. Blackard.
Bet you're happy I get to lead this one off.
No. Just kidding.
I know you are. First thing, one thing, and the last, and the last communication on my email and blacklisting, I have stated and I've not, I don't recall receiving a response, the company Barracuda is a representative of the city subcontractor or that. They work for the city, so I believe I am correct in stating that the city, its contractors or agents have put me on a blacklist for multiple times on emails and I have not heard any city response there and it's been three weeks. So, I would like to stipulate now that if, any, barring any further communications, that this is true and correct, so as we move through this process forward or correcting it, we can get to it. I want to give a big shout out to Rising Stars, they're gonna have a I want to give a big shout out to Rising Stars, they're going to have a petition that they're going to bring up here pretty soon about the homeless. They worked on it, and it's something we need to really, I think, get behind as a community. And that school, I will tell you, is one of the bright shining stars in this city, and we should look to encourage, not only at the City of Moreno Valley, but Moreno Valley Unified School District, is working to put more schools in place and more education opportunities like Rising Stars Business Academy. Because they, you know, against all odds, they are helping kids that really need help, and that probably would have been lost and causing us maybe, as we're seeing in a lot of places, a lot of problems, but they will be productive citizens for the things in the education and the things that are learning at that school. So I want to give them another big shout out again for reaching their goal on their petition, and you'll hear more about that. I want to do, because I probably won't be here for G1, but I want to just address that on the bond for the utility. We ran, and I just ran through the numbers a little bit with Jeanette, I think we used 10 million in bond financing and about 7 million in cash. Really causes me concern that you're bringing up another $19 million lease revenue bond, putting it on the consent calendar, and again, putting city assets against that. I think it's a very costly deal. We saved a lot of money on the last time, and I think, I think there's more creative ways to put these projects together and do them, but consistently, we don't. We don't take the opportunities or avail that. We did in this case, on the last bond, and the city, the city and the Moreno Valley Utility, I think will be much stronger for it. So, I would look real hard before I pass that one on the utilities, because, you know, last time it didn't, you know, against all odds, we got Save the City money, and this time it maybe not happened.
Thank you, Mr. Blackard. Next three.
Alicia Beridge, Nancy Salgado-Renteria, and Maya Compton.
If you can please come up. Go ahead, Alicia. You're fine. No, no, no.
All right, well, good evening, good evening, Mayor Potembaka, good to see you, and all of our council members and guests tonight. My name is Alicia Beridge, and I am the founder and executive director of Rising Stars Business Academy. I just want to share a little bit about our background, because as you can see, we have quite a bit of support in the audience tonight, and we do have some of our students that will be speaking on, about the homeless project that they're currently doing right now. So, Rising Stars, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit youth leadership organization, and we've been in Moreno Valley now since 2010. We have graduated over, at least now, almost 600 students with their accredited high school diplomas, so we're really happy about that. And we are a youth build program, and we're part of a more national organization that's been around for over like 40 years now. But tonight, we have students here, we had a goal, our goal was to reach 1,000 signatures for the petition of what you will hear about a homeless project that they're working on. But we just want to make sure that we are doing something in the community, and what they have selected is something that is dear to them, that they have a passion for, and some of them actually have experienced that. So I don't want to take away from what all they're going to do, but just wanted to let you know that we're here in the community, we do everything that we can to be a part of the community, and we're just glad that we're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Salgado-Renteria, Maya Compton, and Saul Ledesma.
Good evening. So, my name is Nancy Salgado, as you guys heard, and I wanted to start by addressing some alarming statistics on homelessness in Moreno Valley that I was able to obtain from the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness. Approximately 80% of people who stay in urban homeless shelters are homeless only once or for a short time, a short period of time. Approximately 10% are chronically homeless, single adults with disabling conditions who have been homeless for a year or more, or have at least four episodes of homelessness in the past three years. The number of unaccompanied homeless youth is established at 1.6 million, which is 1% of the nation's urban homeless population. The primary causes of homelessness among unaccompanied youth are physical and sexual abuse by a parent or guardian, neglect, parental substance abuse, and family conflict. Bad or women who live in poverty are often forced to choose between abusive relationship and homelessness. Nationally, approximately half of all women and children experiencing homelessness are fleeing domestic violence. There is an estimated 246,296 homeless students in California. 7,533 of them are unsheltered, and as estimated, 300 of them, of these homeless students are reside in the inland empire. No one is exempt for one day becoming homeless, not you, nor I, nor no one. A youth homeless shelter is needed in Moreno Valley. Thank you for your time.
Next three.
Saul Ledesma, Damian Edmonds, and Elvira Rios.
Hello, I'm Maya Compton. I'm here discussing on why homeless youth are homeless. Stop and think of what home means to you. Your definition of home might not be the same as mine. To me, home is a safe and loving place where I am surrounded by people that want the best for me. Home isn't always a physical aspect of a house. Unfortunately, many young people find themselves in tough situations and feel unsafe or unimportant to their home. As my friend Nancy mentioned, the primary cause of homeless among uncomplained youth are physical and sexual abuse by a parent or guardian, neglect, parental substance abuse, and family conflict. We firmly believe that young people who find themselves in tough situations deserve to have a safe place to go. The rights to safety and shelter is basic human right, so why aren't our city officials providing these basic necessities for the residents of Moreno Valley, who are so desperately in need of them, especially youth? Young people who are provided with guidance and to live successfully, life deserves better opportunities to choose a brighter future. Our hope is that young people who find themselves struggling are provided with a second opportunity to do better and start by feeling safe and cared and valued. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next three.
Saul Ledesma, Damian Edmonds, Elvira Rios.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sal. Thank you for having me here today, in front of you guys. This 2018-19 school year has been pretty inspiring for all of us, and the community action project me and my peers and I are leading. This is how it works. Our school year is broken down into three trimesters, and the first trimester, me and my peers researched and explored societal issues affecting youth today. In addition, some of us learned about the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, in which are inherent to all human beings, regardless of race, sex, nationality, ethnicity, language, religion, or any other status. By exploring these topics, we became empowered to learn more on youth homelessness, especially because the topic hit so close for home for some of us. At the beginning of our second trimester, we decided to put together care packages for those who find themselves homeless in our community. My peers and I were given the opportunity to go out and donate basic things such as blankets, socks, maybe toothpaste, deodorant, things of that nature. We were able to put together about 30 care packages or so, which we then distributed to the unsheltered. We came across some individuals who were thankful for their care packages, and some who obviously weren't. Our hope is that the City Council is on our side and will choose to build a youth homeless shelter in Moreno Valley, because there are no shelters here, let alone a youth shelter. Our plans to advocate for homeless youth is contingent upon the City Council's decision to grant the city with a youth shelter. Thank you for your time.
Damian Edmonds, Elvira Rios, Ilinda Gutien.
Good afternoon. My name is Damian Edmonds of Rising Stars Business Academy, and our program has the pleasure to speak with City Councilmember Ulysses about our community action project. After much dialogue, Mr. Ulysses suggested for us to start a petition in order to hear what our community has to say about this. And building a youth shelter in Moreno Valley, our goal was to obtain 1,000 signatures, and we were able to collect, we were able to collect 929 in just a couple of weeks. Here's what people had to say. Rena Daner states, "I work with six kids ages 6 to 12, and I have lost many amazing students in the program because they were homeless, struggling for some sort of stability." There is need, this is needed for our kids, for ability to hit rock bottom and make something respectable of themselves, opposed to living in the struggle and obtaining drugs. Another person states that we need a shelter in Reno Valley immediately because we have none, and some kids just need it due to financial stability and problems housing. There are a total of 121 comments posted on the petition webpage. I urge you to read, teachers, administration, parents, and allies have something to say about this. Thank you for your time.
Elvira Rios, Ilinda Gutien, and Benny Orduno.
Hello. My name is Elvira Rios, and I am a educator at Rising Stars Business Academy. I'm new to the area of Moreno Valley, and I just want to address that since the petition has launched, many of the comments that people left on our petition were very inspiring. Not only are organizations, churches, and programs reaching out to us, asking us, how can we support the building of a youth homeless shelter? But as well as 1,000, I know Damian had said, we collected an estimated 900 signatures. That number has gone up. In just a couple of weeks, 1,3800 of our residents here in Moreno Valley were able to sign the petition and support to building a youth homeless shelter. And that's a huge number that I would like the City Council to just really consider that our residents are urging for the shelter to be open, and that's really all I have to say. I think my students made a pretty good job in addressing some statistics and the urgency of needing a shelter in Moreno Valley, so thank you.
Ilinda Gutien, Benny Orduno, and William R. Welch.
I'd like to thank you all for hearing us. First and foremost, thank you Mayor, thank you City Council. There's a problem in our community, and this problem has been gone announced like a church mouse, never hear it. And the problem is something you've all probably passed by on your way here, and it's a problem with the youth being homeless in our community. The youth have nowhere to go, some people are stuck between homes, and this is a problem that most people don't even talk about. You ride by bums and don't even think what's happening to them, when most of these people have nowhere else to go. This problem affects approximately 300 students in the inland empire, and these people, you never hear from them. People can't go to school because they have, they have to decide between, am I going to go to school, or I'm going to eat? And that problem right there is one of the major problems that's tearing apart our community. When you get on the street, it's hard for you out there. I'll tell you, how many of you guys have actually slept in a code? None of you, I assume? It reaches negatives out here, and you can die from that. Most people, when you are on the streets and you have nowhere else to go, you tend to get depressed. And with depression, statistics have shown that that causes drug abuse right there, and when you get on drugs, it's hard to get off, because the drugs in our community are tearing us apart. People are becoming vulnerable, being subjective to human trafficking. This is a problem we are all having. I ask you all, this is one problem that I don't ask us as, ask us as American citizens, I ask us as city members, I ask us as neighbors, that we all need to pitch in and help. We need a youth shelter. Thank you.
Benny Orduno, William R. Welch, and Lincoln Beridge.
Good evening, Mayor Potem, and councilmembers. First, I want to say, our young people have done a beautiful job this evening. They have done a lot of research, they've done a lot of work for the last six months, and it shows tonight that they are very proactive in what they're doing, and they're very passionate about this project. What I want to share quick is, those of you who, you may all be aware, is that Maslow's hierarchy of needs is a motivational theory comprised of five elements, right? One of the first elements is the physiological need. They need for shelter, they need for food, they need for water, right? When our young people are out on the streets, these are things they struggle with all the time. They're never going to get to that esteem level, they're never going to get, it's going to be difficult to get to that safety level, that belonging level, right, that love, if they don't have that physiological need met. We're very passionate about what we do with our young people. We've been around for nine years, me for six years with the program, and we have seen young people drop out from the other program because there is no permanent housing, there's nowhere to lay their head at night, there's nowhere to find something to eat, right? The only thing they have is Rising Stars, and what we can offer them in shelter is one thing that we can offer. We tried, we do what we can for them, we open up our building, right, and say, stay for one night, we give them different resources, like here's a friend's house, here's this house, but there's nothing permanent. And that temporary housing shouldn't be permanent, but there's nothing that's short-term for them to be able to rest and say, okay, I got this. I can go to school, I can worry about my education, I can focus on things, I can better myself, without having to worry where I'm going to lay my head. And all we're asking tonight is for you guys just to have an open ear, an open mind, an open heart to really listen to the needs of our young people, to the needs of what they're all saying, what they've researched, the stats. Some people may say, why is it just for the youth? How come there's not opening up shelter for other residents in the city of Moreno Valley? Well, we know what we're working with. We know, we know our youth, we know their hearts, we know their passions, we know how to work with our young people. So that's why we're stressing the need for youth shelter, because it's a prevention, right? And to not get to where they can be in the long run, right? Out in the streets forever, until they get older, getting susceptible and vulnerable to using drugs and getting stuck, because when you're on those drugs, right, personally speaking for my family, it's hard to get off of it, right? It's hard. And I don't know if you guys have experienced that with your family members or anybody that you know, but as soon as they get on those drugs, there's no coming back sometimes. And we're trying to prevent that. And we want you guys to listen, to hear us out, and just show some support, some way, shape, or form, and that's all we're asking. Thank you.
William Welch, Lincoln Beridge, Jackie Moot.
So, I just want to say good evening to all the council, to the city itself. I don't have much to say. Normally, when I come, and I haven't been here for a while, I have a whole lot to say, but I really don't have much to say because the youth have done a tremendous great job tonight, expressing themselves, and expressing the things that they feel, and expressing what they see out in our community. And so, I really don't have too much to say. I do want to thank our youth for coming out tonight to support their own vision. I want to thank all those that took the time out to sign this petition, and I just want to thank those folk that have supported us in this, because it's something that we are looking forward for the city to help in any way, fashion, or form, because it's a necessity that we need in this community. We see it every day. There's no other way for me to put it. We see it every day. We got kids coming into our facilities every single day. Some don't have nowhere to go, and we have to sit down and figure out what are we going to do to help that particular person. We see it every day. We see it when we come to work, when we leave the work. The kids see it when they come to school and leave school, because we have homelessness, like literally, out in our parking lots. And so, this petition is dear to my heart because it's something that the students thought of. It's something that they want. It's something that they want to see in their communities. And I'm just praying at this point that the city shows some type of support, however they see fit. There has to be some type of support, because we all have to work together. These are our youth, it's our community, these are our kids, and if we can't stand for them, why should they stand for themselves? And so, I'm not going to say anymore, I'm going to leave it at that. Again, I just want to thank all those who are in support of this petition out in the community. Like I said, it was over 1,000 people that signed this petition, over 1,000 people within a couple of weeks. And that tells me that the need is great in our community. And so, I just want to say thank you guys for your time, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to express, for giving this time, a lot in this time for us to express how we feel out in our communities. And again, we just need some support, we just need some support, and that's all we're asking. So I'm going to leave it at that.
Lincoln Beridge, Jackie Moot, and Al Gascon.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, City Council, all the city officials. My name is Lincoln Beridge, I am the co-founder of Rising Stars Business Academy. And all the kids in the yellow shirt, please stand up for a second, please. All of our staff that's involved, please stand up. What you're looking at are individuals who came from this district that came to our program, individuals that didn't see any, didn't have an alternative, or saw a need, their parents saw a need where they could function in a smaller environment, so they came to our program. These are kids that everyone else kind of in a way turned their back on. And what we did was we reached out to them, we loved on them, we showed them that they're going to be accountable for their mistakes, we showed, we made sure that they're aware of the fact that accountability is an issue. You can sit down now, thank you. But there's those individuals that stepped up to do this petition because they saw a need. These are individuals who no one thought could do. These are individuals who no one thought could do this. And I want to thank them for taking the initiative because as a co-founder and as a pastor in Moreno Valley here locally, it touches me that they, they've, they learned that people do care for them, that not everyone is against them. And I have to really thank the current acting police chief, who I'm a member of the Cops and Clergy Network and we met, had a meeting yesterday and about six or seven of our kids showed up and his openness and transparency and some of the things he said to them really hit home because the youth and obviously the police department has a very strange relationship. But these are individuals that really want to do something in this community. We have had an individual, I'm not gonna mention his name, who was homeless for a long time. Lived in a hole that we found out about, but came to school every single day clean and ready to go to work. And get his job, get his, get his work done. Graduated a few years ago, living, doing good, good things right now. But had we given up on him and not encouraged him or provided for him, he would be in a, probably in a different situation. So the youth are stepping up. My wife Alicia, this has been her passion for many years. But, but I'm just gonna take a couple minutes, but I want to thank the police chief again because some of the things he shared with the kids really kind of hit home and made them realize that the police department's not their enemy. As a pastor and again with my churches, one within ministries, we have a plan to help the homeless. We have ideas. What we're asking for is for the local businesses, the, the community leaders to let's collaborate and sit down. Other states are doing it, other cities are doing it. They're sharing information with me. I think I shared with, with Mr. Cabrera yesterday about some ideas that are coming our way. We want to make this work. As a pastor, we want to partner as a ministry, as a school program to help the youth because like Will said, there's nothing in the community to help the youth when it comes to homeless. So we're asking you to just sit down with us, let's collectively come together, make a change and make Moreno Valley, like the gentleman said earlier, a great place. And let's help our youth, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next three.
Jackie Moot, Al Gaskon, Kimberly Morris.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Moot and I'm with Operation Safe House. I'm the shelter director at Operation Safe House, which is an emergency teen shelter for teens. And I'd like to say thank you to the academy for coming today and sharing their concerns. And I just want to come and tell you about our program so that we, maybe we can help each other out here. The primary goal of Operation Safe House Emergency Shelter is to provide temporary shelter and counseling services for homeless runaway youth and youth at risk. We offer individual, group and family counseling and we also offer parenting classes for the parents for support. Our mission is to help the youth to go home safely. If home is not an option, then we work with the youth family and the youth to find an alternative. Maybe grandparents, aunt, uncle, a good friend of the family until they're able to work out some of their issues and their problems. If that's not, if they're not able to do that, then we may have to get Department of Social Services involved. And at that time, they may be placed in a foster care. But our, the majority of our youth will go home to a safe home. Operation Safe House has been around for twenty-nine years, serving all of Riverside County, counties, including Rivers, I'm sorry, Moreno Valley. Last year, we served three hundred and ninety-one youth and fifty of those youth came from Moreno Valley. This year, so far, we've served over forty youth from Moreno Valley. Operation Safe House can take up to seventeen youth and can stay with us for up to twenty-one days. All of their basic needs, foods, clothing, a warm bed are provided for the individuals and group and family counseling, as I said before. We have formed great relationships with the different churches and service groups here in Moreno Valley, as well as other parts of Riverside. We are a partner, we have a partnership with the Sheriff Department, Mental Health, Department of Social Services, Rape Crisis Center, just to name a few. The outreach team through Operation Safe House, they're here with me today. They've encountered and safely housed twelve homeless and runaway youth in the city of Moreno Valley last year. The purpose of the street outreach program is to increase youth safety, well-being and self-sufficiency for homelessness at-risk youth at ages eleven to twenty-one with the goal of getting them off the streets. Our outreach team has educated about two hundred adults in the Moreno Valley area, including families, teachers, counselors, program directors and staff, private, staff of nonprofit agencies. Our outreach staff will continue to work with the homeless youth in Moreno Valley to safely transition them off the streets into a stable and healthy living situation. Thank you.
Next three.
Al Gaskon, Kimberly Morris.
Good evening, everybody. Counsel, city of Moreno Valley. My name is Al Gaskin. I've been a resident here in Moreno Valley since nineteen eighty-eight as a homeowner. I, I live in one house that I bought here in eighty-eight, Box Springs Mountains, right behind Day Street and Ironwood. And my concern today, and it's been for a while, but this is my first time here at the meeting, by the way. And the pavement on the, on the streets is terrible. You go down Day Street, go to Lowe's. Am I driving in a third-world country? I mean, the streets are terrible. I've never seen it like this before. I've been here for thirty-two years. Day Street has always been a very nice street where people can go and go shopping. It's gone to pots for the last five, six years. There's been no money put into that street. Nothing. All the, all the money's been going over there to the other side and nothing over here. I'd like to see what we can do with our taxpayers' money. I'm sure there's money from Prop Six now because, you know, that little proposition got a little foggy by the Attorney General up there in Sacramento. So I would like to see some improvement on the streets. I know it's on the agenda. I saw it right now. It's my first time looking at it for twenty-twenty. You guys want to repave everything over here in Moreno Valley? Can we do it a little bit quicker than that? That's, that's my concern why I'm here today. But after listening to all these people here today, there is another concern over there on Day Street and that's homelessness. There's a lot of people that are homeless, that are asking for money. They're living underneath the, the overpass of the freeway right there on Day Street. I've seen them as far as right past Morton Road where the railroad tracks are. If you go down Day Street to go to the, to go to the freeway, they're right there. It's a big empty lot where the railroad is down below there and they live down there. You know, so I want to address that too, now that they're addressing it. And at the end of the night, they're human beings. You know, nobody wants to be rejected. Nobody wants to be disliked. Nobody wants to be ignored. You know, let's, let's do what, let's not do what our flesh tells us to do. Let's do what God wants us to do. Thank you. God bless everybody.
Kimberly Morris.
Is that the last speaker?
The last speaker.
Good evening, everyone. I am so frightened right now when I get in front of a mic. But anyhow, I'm here in agreement with the Rising Star Business Academy. One of the reasons why I'm here is because I've been commissioned to stand here, to carry out and help carry out this mission. I'm here because the students have a heart, their eyes are open. Their hearts are all open. They will no longer turn a blind eye to what they see every day. I know all of us here has a, a hand that's been dealt in life. And with that hand that you've been dealt with, you have to learn how to deal with it and live with it. I know a lot of people that are homeless on the streets. They're not homeless because they want to be. A lot of children are youth that are on the streets that are homeless. They're not homeless because they want to be. A lot of them come from broken homes. A lot of them come from abusive homes. A lot of them run away from foster homes, foster care systems. People that have taken them in, saying they're gonna take care of them, get a check for them, can care less about them. You know, so I'm here because I'm in agreement and my heart is open, my eyes is open. I won't turn a blind eye because I see, I help the homeless every day. I won't say every day, but every chance, time I get a chance with socks or food or clothing, whatever I can, but you're limited to what you can do when they're out on the streets. So when I came across this article about helping build a homeless shelter, I was like, thank you, Jesus. Because this is one of our commissions to love one another, to help one another. You know, all of us come from different backgrounds and we're responsible to work with what we have. And so I just pray that you guys extend your heart and your minds to what these youth are presenting to you. I'm sorry. God bless you.
That's okay. That concludes our public comments on non-agenda items. And we'll direct the city manager to reach out to Rising Stars Academy so that we can start the conversation, a courageous conversation about what's going on in the community. I myself have not seen the petition. I don't know who has it. If you would like to provide a copy to the council, you can give it to the bailiff, who will give it to the city clerk and he'll make copies for the entire city council. So we don't know what's on it, so we can't speak on it. But homelessness is, it's a difficulty. It's, it's heart-wrenching, I understand. And we do care about our youth. We truly do. And I know I speak for the entire council, including our mayor, who is very concerned about what's happening. As, you know, as you know, he's a teacher in our local school district, so there is concern. So we'll start the conversations. Our city clerk's office will set up a meeting for the city manager and it's up to you who you want to bring. And I would like to ask Councilman Cabrera if you could take a lead on this issue. So he'll be our contact person from the council. Okay, so we're gonna continue with our business meeting. We're gonna take a five-minute break and we'll be back at, let's see, six forty-five, six fifty. Thank you. Okay, welcome back to the city council meeting. Would any of our council members like to make comments at this time? Councilman Cabrera?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. And so first of all, I would just like to say thank you to Rising Stars and Mr. and Mrs. Beridge, Will, Benny, everyone, everyone. And I don't remember everybody's name, but thank you to Rising Stars for coming out here, giving us your presentation. You invited me out several weeks ago to actually share with me your research regarding homeless youth and the issue that we have right here at home. And that, that presentation, that's what really moved me. That's what kickstarted this, all of this. And it led up to the presentation tonight. So as far as, as me helping you, you know you have my support. And, and I've already been working on other things outside of my capacity as a council member, reaching out to the clergy here in town with other churches and pastors, property owners with different unions from all the trades, carpenters, all kinds of different groups who are willing to help and volunteer to make this happen. So it's, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And so now, now that you've presented here to the council, kind of like Mayor Potem said, we, we want to figure out what we can do as a city to help. And so now we're gonna start that conversation. We can have those meetings between staff and you and we can move on to the next step. So like I said, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. We know it's an issue and we can start with this. So once again, I just want to thank you all so much for coming out and I look forward to seeing you all again and again. Thank you.
Councilwoman Thornton.
Yeah, I would also like to thank you all for coming out. I just love community advocacy and seeing so many students come, take time in the evening to come to a city council member meeting and be so civically engaged. It's awesome. I don't know what teacher came up with the idea of a community action project, but I'm like, we need to be doing this at the graduate level. This is one of my students. So this is amazing to see. So I'm a social worker. I have my masters and my doctorate in social work. So I'm really, when we look at societal problems for this special population, I have a different lens than most. And I'm sure in the business academy, the students have learned about a SWOT analysis, right? Strength, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. So let's talk about the opportunity that was presented to us earlier. Operation Safe House is already an existing nonprofit that serves this community for Riverside County. And all too often, I actually teach classes called Nonprofit Management and Leadership that talks about some of the challenges that nonprofits experience from not linking with already existing nonprofits. So if there's a gap that you all are recognizing here, that you're saying that Operation Safe House is not doing for Moreno Valley, what I would encourage us to do is to partner with an already existing nonprofit that not only is providing housing, because housing is just one component of homelessness, especially for youth. They need wraparound. They need counseling, which Operation Safe House has, is with licensed marriage family therapy. They provide parenting classes. Not only do they provide housing, but they have a school on campus. The kids need to go to school. And so, what I would encourage us to do is to do a need assessment and figure out where can we expand our partnership with Operation Safe House to provide them with the resources to fulfill that gap in Moreno Valley? Because the thing that I would hate to happen is that we engage a nonprofit that fails five years from now. Instead of partnering with a nonprofit that already has a twenty-nine-year history of dealing specifically with this demographic. And lastly, I just think also we need to think about the bigger picture too for youth, that we need to be thinking about transitional housing, which Operation Safe House also has. And also partnering with Moreno Valley College, which has many students that are, not only are experiencing food insecurities, right? But are living out of their cars while going to college. So there's an opportunity there. And the thing that's the thread of the SWOT analysis is that in the nonprofit world, we're constantly fighting for funding, all right? Funding is thin. And so when you're looking at the other nonprofits that are already serving this demographic, you need to be thinking that now we're gonna be fighting for resources. So what are the opportunities for us to partner with already existing nonprofits to serve our community? So I want to say once again, thank you so much for coming out. I hope this is just not like a one-time thing and you guys continue to come to city council meetings and we see you again. And I look forward to having a deeper conversation around this.
Thank you. I would also like to add that we include our two school districts, Moreno Valley Unified and Valverde Unified, because they have a mandate under the McKinley-Vento Act to provide homeless students with resources which include transportation and food. So they need to be at the table with us. Okay, so we're now going to move to our joint consent calendars, sections A through E on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendar, sections A, B, C, D and E are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council, community services district, city as successor agency, for the community redevelopment agency, housing authority or the board of library trustees requests that an item be removed for a separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. Are there any public comments? City clerk?
Yes, Roy Blackard.
Good evening, Mr. Blackard.
Good evening.
How's Dad?
Absolutely fantastic. And I want to congratulate you or thank you, Councilmember Baca, for allowing everybody to speak and giving them the three minutes. That's much appreciated. A ten, Alessandra LaSalle, Browns Hill, known as the Big Rock Pile. I think we spent, what, a couple of years ago, two-point-eight-five million dollars on that property? I think there was a person that came up here and sent an email to the city and to the city council and said, you know what, this project probably ain't gonna go. And here we are, we're selling it. The promise, the little carrot that was set to the seniors for the senior housing is not going to be built along with the low-income housing. This is a big problem and why government should not be involved in these things. You heard the man come up here and talk about roads and everything else and not getting done. Two-point-eight-five million dollars and we're sitting there tying it up. $2.85 million, and we're sitting there tying it up and across this. And I know there's a lot of sticky stuff to this. But the bottom line is, things don't get done because council does not make good decisions a lot of times because they do not have accurate and complete information. And it kind of has a tie-in because the blacklisting and the last email I sent with that had a connotation to the developer that started this project that is not being completed and is now proposing at Cottonwood and Indian. So I would encourage the council, when they're looking at these things and when you're considering these things, that you put in and look and get all the complete information. Because if we spend our money wisely and efficiently, we will be able to fix this stuff, just like the roads. Had we reformed the crossing guard system, there would be a lot more roads fixed in this town. But you, you know, sometimes it just takes the will to do it. I hope we eliminate the cannabis on A-17, the rules and regulations. You have the CUP process. That's all you need. Has to come before council. Putting additional rules or regulations does not allow the free market to work. Again, if we make good, sound decisions on that, just like with utility companies, we're saving a lot of money. On the last proposal, we're reversing course again and going back to the old ways. You mentioned Dad. He talked about Alessandro and Day and all that. And going back, of all this stuff, we've got to stop making these mistakes. And we've got to look at who, what, and why the best way to spend the money and to do that, and maybe listen to the ones that are coming. Because again, go back and look at the record. Somebody told you not to get involved. It wasn't going to happen, and it didn't. And we're in this situation on the Cottonwood and property.
Thank you, Mr. Blackard. Any council members want to remove items from the consent calendar for a separate action or for discussion?
Yes, I'd like to pull A-13 for discussion and a separate vote.
I have a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
A-17, just for a question.
And I'd like to-
That was A-17?
A-17.
And A-10 for a separate action.
Hey, let's start with A-17. You have a question, Councilmember Thornton?
Yes, I just had a question, just for further clarification and the justification for A-17.
Certainly. How the city attorney addressed that?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Protam, council members. The commercial cannabis process involves two permits. The first one is a commercial cannabis business permit. The other one is a conditional use permit, just like any other land use entitlement. The rules that the council adopted in December provided for a 60-day period from the time of issuance of the provisional commercial cannabis business permit to the time of initiating the application process for the conditional use permit. And the reasoning behind that was we didn't want entities to hold provisional permits for years at a time. There was a deadline that council wanted to install. We have discovered that some of the businesses that are planning to locate under our regulations are either leasing or purchasing raw land. And an application, conditional use permit application for raw land requires certain further documentation and more submittals, which take a little longer period of time. Therefore, the staff is suggesting to the council, requesting that you approve an extension from 60 to 90 days. It's not going to make a great deal of difference, but it is going to provide that extra period of time for those applicants to complete their submittals for the conditional use permit. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we'll move Item A-13 and A-10 to a separate vote, for a separate vote? Is that correct?
Discussion vote, yes.
Marquez, you want discussion and a separate vote, right, on A-13?
Yes.
Okay.
And for A-10, I'd actually like to request that we table that for a future meeting.
A-10.
A-10 is the, it's the exclusive, it's the negotiation agreement for the property on LaSalle and Alessandro.
And you would like to pull this item until when?
I think we need a little bit more time to actually ask more questions to meet with staff, and so we can bring this back at a future meeting, so we can just table this for now.
Okay, do you have a date?
I think the next council meeting, the first one in April, should be sufficient. Yeah, April 2nd.
April 2nd, okay. Do we have consensus for that?
I'll need a second on that.
I'll second.
Okay, so we don't have, we had a second from Councilmember Marquez, but there's no consensus on the council, so we'll continue.
We would need three of you to agree to move that item, basically by consensus.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of, was it A-?
A-13.
I make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
Before we move on, since there was a second on that motion, do we need to take a vote for A-10?
We can, if you-
It's up to the mayor.
City clerk, can you do a voice count, voice vote?
And against for clarity, this would be a motion to continue the item to April 2nd. Local vote.
Your vote?
The motion was by Councilman Cabrera. Second by Councilman Marquez. You want us to vote? You're going to call on us, City clerk?
I'm just moving it so that it'll show the vote.
Okay.
Councilmember Thornton?
No.
Councilmember Cabrera is yes, correct?
He made the motion.
And then Councilmember Marquez is yes?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
I'm going to support Councilman Cabrera and vote yes to move the item to the next council meeting, which is April 2nd, I believe.
That is correct. Mayor Protam and council members, just for clarity of record, you actually took the vote on the consent agenda, which included Item A-10.
We haven't voted on that.
You stopped the vote. Thank you, okay. Then that item is now, by motion, continued to April 2nd, and you're voting on the consent agenda without A-10 and A-13.
Motion passes, three ayes, one no. Councilmember Thornton voted no.
Okay, now we're moving to Item E, Section E, Consent Calendar. Nope, that's not it. Section F, Public Hearings?
You need to vote for the consent calendar.
That's right. I'm getting ahead of myself. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of A-13.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Call for the vote. We got a second from Cabrera, Councilman Cabrera.
Okay, please vote.
Okay, next is the public hearing for the two national pollutant discharge elimination systems, mail ballot proceedings. City clerk, our staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Protam, members of the council. As indicated, this is a mail ballot proceedings. We're actually going to do two of them. Staff's recommending to do both of them together. So we have two projects coming tonight. One is a 97-unit residential tract, eight parcels. That's over at Paris and Lawless. And the other project is a self-storage facility. It's got two parcels over at JFK in Paris. So as a condition of approval for our projects, we require the applicant to either fund or otherwise identify a funding source for the MPDS requirements. Both property owners of all 10 parcels have requested to ballot for this process to satisfy that condition of approval. This is for the parcel charge, specifically the MPDS parcel charge. And affects two property owners and a total of 10 parcels, as mentioned. So staff is recommending that the council hold a public hearing tonight for both, and then close the public hearing, and then absent any compelling arguments, go ahead and accept the results of the ballot, which we'll do separately, because there are two different ballot proceedings. And then if a yes ballot is occurring for both, we'll set the rates as recommended in the staff report. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? For staff? Okay, we'll open the hearing. City clerk, do we have any speakers?
None.
Okay, anyone else want to address this issue? Okay, we'll close the hearing. I'll entertain a motion by council to approve Staff Recommendation Number Two.
Make a motion.
Second, motion in a second. Please vote. The motion is approved. If our city clerk can count the ballot and report the results?
For KB Home? Yes. And for Arlene Hammond? Yes.
I entertain a motion by council to approve Staff Recommendations Number Three and Four.
Make a motion.
A motion in a second. Please vote. Okay, motion passes. That takes us to Item, or Section G, General Business. G1, Resolution Approving the Issuance of the 2019 Lease Revenue Bonds. Report of Financial and Management Services.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, city council members. The staff report this evening addresses the infrastructure priority of the Momentum of Vow strategic plan and ties to one of Moreno Valley Utility's strategic objectives, to operate in a manner that ensures long-term financial viability, stability, affordable energy, and customer value. To help achieve this objective and to help make MVU independent of the city's general fund, MVU is seeking to increase investments into their infrastructure while building reserve funds. Tonight's action is seeking city council's approval to provide financing to enhance the electric utility systems' infrastructure through CIP projects that have already been approved. This just provides the funding for those projects, those being the installation of approximately 5.8 miles of infrastructure backbone, retrofitting certain switches, and installation of smart meters for households so that they can take advantage of better tracking on their utility and save money on their bills. The Series 2019 bonds are being proposed to allow for the development of these projects while continuing to also develop the reserves. By funding these improvements through bonds rather than PEGO financing, the users of the utility over the life of the improvements will be equitably charged as those improvements are consumed over the 30-year period, essentially. Based on the existing favorable interest rates in the market, it's a prudent time for the utility to go forward with the bonds to finance the infrastructure. And in order to take advantage of these market conditions, the authority is looking to issue an amount not to exceed $18 million in bonds. The actual dollar amount is going to be, I believe, a little less than $16 million, and the estimated total interest cost will be about 4.2% interest on that. The debt service for the bonds are expected to be funded from revenues from the city's electric utility. And one thing I did want to point out, as we were going through this financing, working with Finance Sub and the Utility Commission, we received a credit rating through Standard and Poor's. And part of that credit rating, they reconfirmed our A-plus rating, but also gave us an upgrade of our outlook. The prior outlook was stable. They've upgraded the outlook to positive. So this is a great movement. Every little adjustment in a credit rating is great. And that's really reflective of the positive management and policies, along with budgetary strength and flexibility through the operations of both the city and the utility. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Marshall. Council have any questions of staff? Councilmember Marquez?
Marshall, utility, what's the reserve at this time?
The reserves, I believe we're sitting somewhere around $10 million in the utility reserves. When we look at full operations, where we should be is closer to about $35 million in that, so.
Thirty-five?
Yes.
When, you said it was 4.2. That's the life of the bond?
4.2% is the estimated interest rate for the bonds.
That'd be the life of the bond?
Yes.
So it won't fluctuate with the economy going up or down?
No, we finance with fixed interest rates on our bond issues.
So we can't do anything to bring down that bond with any part of our reserves?
By utilizing the reserves, we would actually kind of detract from our credit rating. That could increase our interest. One of the things is to make sure that this is independent from the general fund. At this point, the utility, without full reserves, has to be backstopped by the general fund. So we're creating this structure to create that independence and have a stronger structure moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
City clerk, do we have any public comments?
None.
Council, any questions, deliberations, comments? Speak now. I entertain a motion by the council to approve Staff Recommendations Number One through Four.
Make a motion to approve Staff Recommendations Number One through Four?
A second?
Please vote. Motion passes. Item G2, Adoption of Resolution to Establish a Project List for the Fiscal Year 2019-2020, Senate Bill One, Funding and Concurrent of a Pavement Management Program, Five-Year Look-Ahead Plan. Public Works, please.
Good evening again, Mayor Protam, members of the council. As indicated, this is a presentation on pavement management program. Two items. One specifically will be the SB1 funding, the resolution associated with the California Transportation Commission. And then two will talk just in general about the pavement management program and a five-year look ahead that staff has put together. So with the slide presentation, I'll go through just a couple of things. If I can get it to go forward. So this is the resolutions that's attached, which is a requirement from the California Transportation Commission, the CTC. So we're required every year to identify the locations that we're going to be funding with SB1 funds. We did this last year. We're doing it again this year, so that's the regulatory portion of this staff report. Council resolutions required. These are forms that go to the state, and they're actually updated annually. In fact, there are quarterly updates as well. The expectation for this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year for 1920, is that we'll receive between $3.2 and $3.4 million annually from the SB1 funds. And that's dictated a little bit by some fluctuation, gas tax sales plus vehicle licensing fees, things like that. So originally, we were identifying $3.4 million through the state, and now we're closer to $3.2. So those are the SB1 funds. The pavement management program, so the five-year look ahead, what we're looking at is taking both our SB1 funding, our annual funding, and our anticipated CDBG funding, which is about roughly together a little over $4 million. As you can see on the slide, we have a big need. So there's about $100 million worth of deferred maintenance. That's our backlog. So it doesn't take us very long to plan out that $4.2 million a year, because there's $100 million worth of work to be done out there. In identifying the needs, we take a look at both our arterial and residential. The recommendation from staff is we look at a mix of that. So 75% identifying funding for arterials and 25% for residential. And then also look at that from a perspective of preventative and corrective maintenance. The idea here is to try to make that switch. Right now, because of our pavement condition, we're identifying a lot- Right now, because of our pavement condition, we're identifying a lot more of the corrective maintenance, which is a very costly maintenance. And that's dictated obviously by the pavement condition. So right now, in order to sort of correct that over long-term, we're identifying seventy-five percent of the fundings to be corrective maintenance with a higher cost maintenance and twenty-five percent to be preventative. Again, the goal there is to switch that to seventy-five percent preventative in the long-term. Here's the big one, the criteria for selection, what are we selecting? So we use a combination of a lot of things. Pavement condition index, that's the PCI, that's the number from one hundred being a brand-new pavement to zero being basically dirt. ADT is a way that we measure volume, so that's average daily traffic. So the previous council's direction, previous discussion has been to identify streets that have a very large volume of traffic to get sort of our best bang for our buck, if you will. Another one that we've added lately is our MNO costs. So oftentimes, we're out there sending staff members to fix potholes. That's a very costly endeavor. And so we're trying to address those locations with permanent repairs so that we're freeing up our staff to do other cost-benefit items. City CIP, so we don't want to be paving streets and then six months later, cutting it open to do a city CIP. So we're trying to make sure we identify those. Another big one is to understand development and utility projects that are coming forward. So again, we don't want to be in front of those, meaning we don't want to be paving, spending half a million dollars on paving a street with the Edison coming behind us and cutting it back open again. So a lot of what we're doing here is making sure we're working in sequence with those proposed projects. And we also do group roadway segments together. The idea here is to get an economy of scale, if you will. So if we're bidding projects, a contractor is able to provide us what we think is a more competitive bid when we group locations together. So that's how we've identified our needs. This is a graph that shows the life cycle of pavements. It's an interesting graph, maybe from an engineering standpoint, maybe not from anybody else's standpoint. But the black line represents the pavement, life of a pavement over twenty years. The key here is to look at, we're trying to keep our pavement expenditures in the top portion of that graph, meaning the least expensive. So if you're looking at pavement condition index, the PCI, currently the city's overall pavement condition index is sixty-five, which happens to be the state average. Anything above that costs us, you know, anywhere between zero dollars a square foot to about two dollars a square foot. That's very cost-benefit is good. As we start to decline, you can see that the curve is actually exponential, meaning that once you get to sixty-five PCI, it exponentially degrades. And the cost there at the very end, the tail end of that, so the twenty to twenty-five range is about seven dollars a square foot. So the idea here is to try to keep all of our pavement maintenance in the upper portion of that graph. Again, with our pavement condition right now, it's very difficult for that, but this is the ultimate goal. I wanted to show that because it really tells the difference between corrective maintenance and preventative maintenance, which is why we're recommending preventative maintenance as well as corrective maintenance in this five-year plan. This was not meant to be an eye chart, but it certainly is. This is an idea of the locations that we're recommending over the five-year period. I do have a map that we can zoom in on if necessary. But basically, anything that's colored, we've used multiple colors here, red being the locations that we're identifying for fiscal year nineteen twenty. The weight of each one of those lines represents either preventative or corrective location. And so we've mapped out over a five-year based on the criteria that we've discussed, where we're recommending that four point two million dollars roughly a year. These are our arterial streets. Again, we can zoom in if necessary. We've also included the most recently finished, or last summer, we included the pavement locations that we've done. And we've also included on this map the locations that are coming up this summer as well, in addition to another five years after that. Again, the red ones are for fiscal year nineteen twenty for arterials. So those will all be on the SB one list and resolution. This is the residential map. This is, again, the same sort of thought process where we're using the criteria, selection criteria. As you can see, we've grouped them together. Again, this is a good indication of trying to get economies of scale. Same concept here, light gray and dark gray are the areas that we just finished or will be finishing this summer. And then the recommendations over a five-year period are in the other colors. Because most of these locations fall within our CDBG target area, these are recommended for CDBG funding. So only a few of these streets, you'll notice, are actually on the resolution and they're in the top, kind of the northwest portion of the city. There's a few sections up there that are actually not in the target area, so they're on the SB one resolution. Again, I have a separate map, but we want to look closer at that. So our recommendation tonight for council as a staff is to approve the resolution for SB one funding for fiscal year nineteen twenty. Authorize the city engineer to make any minor changes. And that request is because sometimes the forms change or sometimes we have to change the limits a little bit of the streets to account for any onsite conditions. And then we're also looking for the council to concur with our five-year program. The intent here is not to set it in stone. So what we want to do is focus our resources and be able to identify a long-term strategy, but certainly not locking us in to not being able to change. So that's our recommendation tonight and available to answer any questions.
Hey, council, any questions of staff? Councilman Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Michael, thank you for the presentation. And just a quick question, if we have to, I know that by May first, we need to submit the list of streets that we want to fix for next year. But if we have to, can we still make some minor adjustments to that list that we'd have, you know, between now and when the work gets done?
Absolutely. So what I would suggest is that we have the opportunity to make those changes if necessary. But we don't want to sort of redo things. So we want to make sure we're knowing what sections we're doing so that we can design it and bid it. So there is a timeframe in there, but we certainly have an opportunity to make some minor changes if necessary, even after the May first dismissal. That's allowed by the CTC.
Thank you.
Council member Marquez.
Yeah, Mike, I know you and I sat down quite a bit and talked about this. Can you go back to that chart on the citywide local streets? I believe it was the last chart you had there. Let me switch my screen over here real quick. District three, if you look at it, to the right of that, there's one, two, three, four streets. Compare the rest of the city. My concern is this. This is the oldest streets in the city. And under this plan, it looks like we only have four streets that might get paved, might get paved. Excuse me. My question is this. These streets that we have here indicate at the twenty-three, twenty-four year. My concern is this. What if the money is available before then? Are we be able to pave those streets before that? Or is it going to be designated somewhere else in the city? That's one question I have. Next question is, are street staff or maintenance, what is their max that they can pave a street, that the city staff can pave a street or city employees? What's the guidelines there?
So a couple of questions, I'll try to answer them in order. I do want to point out though that there are several other places in District three that are being identified. So anything east of Paris and north of JFK, so all that area that's sort of in the central is also part of District three. So there's plenty of, or there's lots of other streets being identified in District three to be paved. The two questions are specifically about whether or not things can be done early. Yes, we certainly can bring things forward with the direction from council if they want to identify a funding source. What we're trying to do here is identify the known funding sources that we're able to identify, which is the SB one and this potential for CDBG. But we certainly could bring designs forward. We'll need to know in advance. It takes us a while to design these projects and bid them. So it does take a little bit of time, but if there's an end-of-year fund balance that's available, like we did, I think, last year, that's an opportunity to bring things forward. So certainly can do that. So these aren't set in stone in terms of the timeframe. They are trying to make sure that we've identified the right amount in each fiscal year so that we don't overload one fiscal year because we don't have, that's a streamlined funding source. It's not available immediately. It's available over time over those fiscal years. The second part of the question, or the second question was about level, which is called a force account is where your question is. How much can the city staff do until it meets a certain threshold from the state? I want to say that that threshold is seventy-five thousand, I believe, by state code. Anything over that has to be bid. And I'll double-check that dollar amount. It changes every couple of years. But there's a certain dollar amount that the state code says, anything above that has to be bid out, cannot be done by city staff or what's called a force account.
So with these streets, these small residential streets, that's within a fiscal year, seventy-five thousand, or is it per job, per street?
Per job, per job. So if we wanted to go out and do a sidewalk project that was over the threshold account, we'd have to bid it. We couldn't, so we have to do an estimate in-house first. And then if it exceeds the state amount, it has to go out to get bid. And that includes not only staff, but material, equipment, gas, all that stuff has to be accounted for when we're talking about that force account amount.
And that's not only paving, that's sidewalks, curves?
Any capital, anything that's defined as a public works, capital P, capital W, project that's in the state code. So paving, grading, concrete, asphalt, all kinds of things, buildings, all those are defined.
Drainage?
Drainage, exactly. Storm drains, utilities, all those are defined as public works projects by the state code. That is the, that's the definition first, and then the force account is defined by hours.
Pretty much tied on what city employees can, or staff can do. Well, hopefully, we get some more money from Sacramento, we'll be able to, some of these older streets on the east end of town. And the two streets that I'm concerned about, and I believe my colleagues could say the same thing, Redlands Boulevard and Alessandro. The most complaints I get are those two streets. And they're not even on here. So hopefully, we'll be able to work something out on that, too.
Well, I did switch over to the arterial map.
Oh, okay.
So the arterial map, we do have several segments on Alessandro that's being identified. And several segments on Redlands. We also have multiple segments on Moreno Beach Drive. So this is the arterial map. The other one was the local streets.
Local streets, okay. Okay, that's, thank you.
Council member Thornton.
Mr. Wolf, my favorite subject, roads, yay. I have like three questions for you. Could you please just, because you're the subject matter expert here, use this opportunity to explain the science of potholes? Whether it is how they form, what's the lifespan of a pothole, once it's filled? Second, if you could explain how rain has had such an impact on our roads. One of our constituents came earlier and said he's never seen the roads like this before, right? Many of us feel the same way. So if you could please use this opportunity to explain how we are kind of melting away due to the wonderful water. And then third, Day Street, I'm trying to figure out based upon the earlier comments, where, because he said driving down the Lowes, right? I know Lowes belongs to MoVal, Moreno Valley. But where is the city of Riverside's responsibility concerning that road or street or, you know, pathway? And then if we, if you do say that it's actually in the city of Riverside, how we work with them to identify improvements?
I'll go through those three hopefully very quickly. My favorite subject as well. Potholes, pothole formation. So asphalt's petroleum-based, it's oil-based, oil and water that everybody, or at least most folks know in science, that they don't mix very well. Those are, that's the natural enemy of our asphalt is the rain. So potholes form from multiple stresses, whether it's overloading from vehicle loads, whether it's poor workmanship, whether it's a cold joint, whether it's running. Or there's lots of reasons why the pavement will distress into a position where it'll allow water to get in. Once that water gets in, it starts degrading that binder between the aggregate, which is the rock, and all the things that are great with the asphalt that makes it the mix, or the oil that makes it the mix. So as soon as that starts to happen, and then you introduce a sort of a load, if you will, meaning a truck or a bus or a car or a fire truck, sorry, fire chief. One of the worst culprits, because it's the heaviest load. So trucks, buses, fire trucks, trash trucks, those are very heavy-loaded vehicles. They introduce a very stressing load on that weak point, and that's how you start generating the potholes. The asphalt binder itself breaks down, the aggregate itself separates, and we start to see that pothole generate. And it can either be done in lifts, because we install asphalt in lifts, certain layers. So you can see sort of either a delamination of lifts or otherwise just a undermining of the actual base, if you will. So potholes form in many, many ways, but really the introduction of water is our worst enemy. And as mentioned, the rains, our largest rains in the last several years, has exposed those locations. So yes, that's a very dangerous mix in terms of creating quite a bit of potholes. So that's my best way of defining how a pothole is a pothole. The third question, if I was able to answer both those first two, is about Day Street. So my understanding, if I recall correctly, the Riverside and Moreno Valley split is basically centerline, median. Anything from State Route sixty south to Eucalyptus, anything on the southbound side is Riverside. Anything on the northbound side is Moreno Valley. So we do have had the discussion with the city of Riverside. We do bring up, especially when residents call us, because they, there's no defining line out there. They don't recognize that potentially some of that's in Riverside. We take that complaint and we'll pass it on to the folks in Riverside. We have done so as well. We also have been working with Riverside, right at the corner of Eucalyptus, there's some developments that are occurring there. And as we do our developments on our side, we also work with Riverside to make sure that they're getting their improvements done on that side. So we certainly have that open communication with our colleagues over at Riverside. But southbound from the sixty to Eucalyptus is city Riverside.
Thank you so much for that very in-depth answer. I'm sure you did like your elementary school science projects on roads. Just to clarify though, how, when we fill the potholes, what's the lifespan of that?
I missed that. Thank you, you did ask that before. So we have two ways to do that. We can do an emergency repair, which is cold patch, and that will last us, with fingers crossed, a month, depending on the weather. If we're able to fill with hot mix, which is, you know, the temperature of the asphalt, it could last anywhere, you know, six months to ten months, again, depending on the weather and the loading. Those both are very temporary repairs. And so you can see if we're out there multiple times, if it's only a couple of weeks with a cold patch, because that's an emergency repair, or even six months with a hot patch or, you know, hot mix. The idea is try to do more of a patching methodology rather than a pothole fill, and that requires, you know, additional pieces of equipment. But those can last, if we do a patch, if we go to competent, we find competent surrounding asphalt, we can do a patch and work, use our paper box. That can last anywhere a couple of years, you know, three or four years.
Okay, thank you so much, sir.
Okay, thank you. I really, thank you, Mr. Wolf, for the presentation and the council questions. I really look forward to this summer when it's nice and hot and we have our crew out there repairing the streets. I know that our residents will be very pleased with the results. It's hard going down Day Street and knowing that it doesn't belong to us, but we need to get to Lowes, to Winco, to Costco, and all the businesses on the east side of Day Street, because we don't shop on that other side.
Okay. City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
None.
Council deliberation. Councilman Cabrera.
Just real quick. Actually, the map that is currently up there on the screen, you know, I've gotten a lot of complaints from my constituents as well, because a lot of them take either Moreno Beach or Redlands Boulevard to get into District four. So I'm just really happy. It's been years that Redlands Boulevard really needs help. So I'm glad to see that that's on the list, because it's really bad on that side. And other than that, kind of talking on the topic of Day Street, I believe, if I remember correctly, that portion of Day Street is actually within the district for Councilmember Melandres in Riverside. So he would be someone that would be good to talk to, reach out to them. Maybe, they're probably going through the same process right now. So it would be good to kind of mention that to him, and maybe we can get that portion fixed as well. So just wanted to mention that, too.
Okay, I entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendation number one through three. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We now move to section H, items removed from consent calendars for discussion or separate action. Community service, if we can have a report on item A thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, council members. Item A thirteen is an item recommending the modification of the city's position control system, defunding a community services supervisor in the Parks and Community Services Department, and funding a new position of community services superintendent. and funding a new position of Community Services Superintendent. At the time, this position is vacant, and it was a perfect opportunity to take steps in creating this career path for current staff. That concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions the council may have.
Council questions to staff. Councilmember Cabrera. Okay, Councilmember Marquez.
Patty, I, I went through this staff report, and I'm kind of confused. Kevin, when he, when he left, when he departed, what was his position there?
Community Services Supervisor.
Supervisor. Now, back in 1718, 1718, we, we opened up a position as Deputy Director.
Yes, sir.
Now, you're asking for, to not, excuse me, you're asking to, to just change the name or position. My concern is this. What is a superintendent's position going to do that the supervisor's position could do?
It's a very good question. One of the things that I noticed when I came on board is, in our profession, superintendents have a responsibility for an entire division typically, or a large responsibility for other managers and a large staff. And that's what was taking place here. And for our career paths, a supervisor would next go to a superintendent or Park and Community Services manager position, sometimes they're interchangeable. And then they would move on to a Deputy Director position, and then to a Director position. So for recruitment purposes, to recruit another person, it's important to have a proper title that people understand in our profession. Typically, a supervisor, if, if we had a current person as a supervisor, and they went to apply to another department, they may not get recognized as ready for that position, because supervisors are looked at as a different level of experience and supervision in our field. So in this role, the supervisor position was already doing a lot of responsibilities that other cities the same size as ours, and in what we call our market basket, other cities that we compare to for duties and salaries, that was already taking place. So this job position already had a lot of responsibilities. And then with the Deputy Director coming on board, they step in for the Deputy Director at times, some of those duties overlap a little bit. So it seemed like the proper move to make in order to make a special career path, you know, in our department for our staff, be aligned with other cities, and we were able to absorb that in-house with a Step One difference of $6,700.
When you, you mentioned estimate a cost of $6,700. Excuse me.
I'm sorry, I, Step One difference. So between Step One of the existing salary range and Step Two, I'm sorry, Step One of the new salary range is a difference of $6,700.
You want to defund the position of supervisor and create a new position as superintendent?
Correct.
The pay scale, as we have it now, is $65,000 for supervisors, minimum, max is 91.6. You want to change that to superintendent and change that pay rate at $71,700 with a max of $101,000. Our deputy clerk makes $101,000 right now, last accounting. Don't you think that, that, that's a lot of money for, for a superintendent's position? I mean, $101,000, you're going to have to do something with their Deputy Director's salary. Their, their responsibilities aren't the same, we all know that. But at this time, I don't think that taxpayers would really appreciate the city or council to add a position when, when that supervisor's position can do the job. You know, there's a big difference here. And, and my concern is a Deputy Director making six figures right now. And, and don't take me wrong, I'm not saying that it's, it's, she's out of, you know, they're, they're out of place. But I'm just looking at the superintendent's position, at some time, you're going to have to give them a raise. If you do that, you have to give the Deputy Director a raise. So I, I, I just, I, I can't, I'm not comfortable with this. Of creating a new position and, and giving them more money when, when you have a deputy member. We didn't have a Deputy Director several years ago, and we did very well without, without them, or that position. Maybe some of the responsibilities should, should go split between a new supervisor position and a Deputy Director. It, it's just hard to, to accept that, that, because we're, we're a city of 200,000 people, we, we need to have a superintendent in place. I, I just can't accept that. I would say at this time, you, you, just looking at the total salary, it's $346,000 for three positions in Parks. To me, that's, that's hard to accept. I, it just bothers me. I want to say at this time, maybe we should table this, and let, let staff and us go through this again and, and figure something else out. I, I just can't, I just can't do it. I, I can't accept that. So with that being said, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, members of the council, I believe the councilman in there was also a question about why this is being, how can it be justified? And so if I, if I may, I'd like to just add a little bit for your consideration. The department doesn't set, the Parks Department doesn't set the salary. The Parks Department identifies an operational need, and the Human Resources Department provides an independent review of what are the duties and what are the comparable salaries. And when they look at salaries, Councilman, you, you mentioned, I believe, a Deputy City Clerk position. They, HR looks at salary relationships inside the organization, as well as in the market basket, cities that, that we generally compare ourselves to. For example, we don't compare ourselves to the City of Los Angeles. Their pay charts are completely different. But we do compare ourselves to cities more in our area, similar, similar mission, similar size, similar structures. So from that standpoint, the HR Department looks at it, and, and in this case, this report actually comes from HR and recommends the salary level. As far as where the position would be hired, you'll see that the salary range for a Community Services Supervisor greatly overlaps with the salary range for Community Services Superintendent. And so the, the placement within that range, if this is approved, I doubt very seriously that we'd be hiring at the very top of that range. There's always room to grow. And another question, finally, that you asked, Councilman, you described a scenario perhaps where, well, if the superintendent gets a merit increase, well, then the Deputy Director would have to have a merit increase. The situation you're describing is called compaction. And ideally, you don't want people who are supervising someone to be working at the same or a lower salary. But when we, when we look at compaction, when setting salary ranges, we compare the top to the top. So it is entirely possible, in our system and in other local government systems, that you could have someone that they're not, they don't have a 5% difference. Because, for, for example, you may have a, a superintendent who's been in place 20 years, and you hire a new Deputy Director who hasn't. There, there could be an inverse relationship, but it's not based on the actual, it's based on top of the range to top of the range. So I've tried to cover a whole lot of stuff, and I appreciate your patience with that. We have an opportunity, I think, here to, if the council's so inclined, to get the structure of our department to help it evolve to match the mission that has evolved. I dare say that, that the scope of services and programs that are being provided today is better than it was a few years ago, when we had a structure of a Director and a Division Manager. I'd say it's also better than it was before that, when the department had a Director and two Division Managers. That was, that was much more expensive than the structure we're providing, we're recommending to you tonight. So I hope that, that the council would please take that into consideration as you consider the recommendations before you. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilman Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a couple of questions as well. The, the person who was previously the supervisor, the position that you're recommending to, to get rid of, how much were they making before they left?
I'm honestly not sure. I don't know where he was in his salary range. But it was within the range, and it was not at the top, because he had only been in that position a couple of years.
Yeah, I, I'd like to know, it, it'll be good to know, how much he was making before he left. Because the range was between, I think, like 60,000 or so up to 90,000. It was a $30,000 range, but it'd be good to know how much he was making, if it's possible to find that out. Also, when comparing to surrounding cities, those positions exist in other cities. So how much are, what, what is it, superintendents, park superintendents, how much are they earning in, you know, surrounding cities?
Mayor Protem, councilmembers, as Mr. DeSantis had stated, this is work that is conducted by the Human Resources Department. We do conduct a compensation study with similar cities, and when we had conducted it for this position, we were in the mid, middle range. There are cities that do pay less, but this, it's not as robust as a program or robust of a position, and there are cities that do pay more. So we were right in the middle range for this position when we did our compensation study.
Okay. And you look at cities throughout the Inland Empire, throughout California?
We look at cities within our surrounding district. We begin with our eight comparable cities that we use on a regular basis. They are very similar to the City of Moreno Valley. If they do not have that position, we just widen our circle a little bit. We try to remain in Riverside County. With this position, we were able to, the majority were from Riverside County in our surrounding area. The Inland Empire, I believe the most distant was Rancho Cucamonga.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so you, so we sit right in the middle, which means, you know, we're not paying too little or too much. Because, you know, like City Manager said, I mean, we have been having a lot more events, we have a lot coming up here in the summer. We're, in the next couple of weeks, actually this weekend, we have one coming up. So there's a lot of different events that have happened, new events that have started in the past year that are going to continue this year. And so that, that position definitely is very valuable. And so that, that would be my only, my only concern. Hopefully, we don't bring in someone from the get-go and pay them at the top of that bracket. So that would be my only concern there. But I do understand how important that position is, and we have a really good team there in, in Parks. So, you know, you said that we wouldn't bring someone in at the top of that bracket, so I think that's, that's what we'll be expecting. Thank you.
Councilmember Thornton.
I just wanted to say, I would support Councilmember Marquez's motion to table it to the next City Council meeting. Just that, you know, there's a lot of questions out there, maybe a comparison of job descriptions between the supervisor and the one that we're proposing, get this answer about the last salary that the last person made, and just have a little bit more discussion. I definitely believe that there's a need there, but at the same time, I think that this is going to be a permanent position, that's not going away. So it will be imperative for us to feel comfortable. So I would second that motion to table it to the next City Council meeting, if, if it, so move forward.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table until the next council meeting. Is that April 2nd? Okay, until April 2nd? That's Item A-13.
Mayor Protem, if staff needs a little longer time, maybe the third City Council-
Actually, Mayor Protem and councilmembers, we're anxious to have your decision on this, because as Councilman Cabrera mentioned, that's a critical vacancy on our operation right now. Planning's already underway for July 4th, so we're ready to, to talk about it further tonight, or at the next meeting, sooner the better from the timing perspective.
We have a motion on the floor. So let's vote on tabling it till April 2nd. We'll hear Item A-13 on April 2nd. Thank you.
If, if possible, if we could set meetings with us as soon as possible, so we can get some more information on it.
Thank you. We'll move to Item I, Reports, City Council Reports, March Joint Powers and the RCTC. Are there any other reports from the council? Right, the March Joint Powers Authority. Tonight, I'm providing an update from the March Joint Powers Commission meeting held on March 13th. The Commission heard an update from Riverside County Transportation Commission about regional transportation improvements coming to the area, including the truck climbing and descending lanes through the Badlands. RCTC will start a public information campaign about the project by May or June. We also learned that Phase One of the Mid-County Parkway will be starting construction in 2020 in the City of Paris. Councilmember Thornton, City of Paris, Mayor Michael Vargas, Supervisor Jeff Hewitt, and I will be in Washington, DC on April 29th through the 2nd, meeting with legislators and federal officials to discuss issues and funding priorities for the JPA. Finally, we approve the Heacock Truck Terminal northwest of Heacock and San Michelle intersection, which will provide screened, short-term parking spaces for 260 trucks to get them off our city streets. RCTC launched Reboot My Commute, so remember that term, Reboot My Commute, a public engagement campaign to receive feedback on how to spend limited transportation funding and improve the quality of life for commuters. Residents can post comments using various social media, text messages, or by calling 800-450-3650. Please go online and visit rebootmycommute.org for further details. That concludes both my reports. I don't believe there's any others tonight, okay? So we'll move on to the City Manager's report. If you can address some of the comments that were made tonight. I wanted to say, as City Manager, that I've received emails from Mr. Blackard, so I don't know what, if you can clarify that, what does he mean by blacklisting? I don't know if I should respond to them, so that he can know that they're getting to me, and I don't know what, if you can elaborate on that. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll begin with that, that topic, Mayor Protem. As previously reported, the city does not block emails from any resident or any business here in Moreno Valley, to include tonight's speaker, and we've been through this in a previous meeting, and, and it's still the same comment. We hire a, we have a contract with a private company that screens emails that their algorithm indicates could pose security threats to our system. They identify those addresses, we do not. That, that private firm operates its own proprietary software. We do not do that. Although the city doesn't control that vendor's software processes, our technology manager has asked the vendor to reevaluate its decision to, to identify that particular email address being used by tonight's speaker. Our staff did respond to the speaker, and we received his response, asking the same question again. We're, we're not going to continue responding, we've given him all the information we have. There's really nothing more the city can do, but it is very important to reassure everyone that the city does not block emails from any resident or business in our community. Second topic, just quickly regarding Item A-10 from tonight's agenda. A speaker incorrectly characterized the status of a housing project that was initially proposed for Alessandro and LaSalle. The fact is that that project- The fact is that that project is moving forward and at a location more suitable than the LaSalle site. And the sitting, the city's housing authority under this council's leadership remains committed to meeting the need for affordable housing projects throughout our community. Third of fourth topics tonight, it was wonderful to hear from the operation, or from the manager of Operation Safe House. The city is proud of its partnership with Operation Safe House, serving at, at-risk youth in our community. This council has been a very active partner, particularly since you've allocated ten-thousand dollars in community development block grant, grant funding to Operation Safe House. We're very much looking forward to following Dr. Thornton's suggestion to consider options to expand our relationship with Operation Safe House to meet underserved needs in our community. Their twenty-nine-year track record is really strong. They are supported by jurisdictions throughout our region because they, they know how to do it, they do it right, and they target a very fragile population. So we look forward to, to following up on Dr. Thornton's suggestion in that regard. And lastly, a resident, one of the topics he talked about, about homelessness. And homelessness is affecting communities everywhere. Moreno Valley, however, takes strong steps to assist those in need. As discussed in depth at the council's last study session, our homeless-to-work program is making a real difference in people's lives on a daily basis. This program provides participants a meaningful pathway to stability and to a gainful employment. And we thank our mayor and our councilmembers for their vision. This came about because of our elected official's vision to do something different in our community. And so this program fulfills that vision and is a real testament to Moreno Valley's commitment to those most in need in our community. And that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, City Manager. City Attorney report?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
We'll move to reports and comments from city council. Dr. Thornton, Councilwoman Thornton, thank you. Mayor Protem, you did a great job tonight.
I also wanted to say, in, in, in partnership with Reboot My Commute, the Moreno Valley app does now allow you to report potholes. So I'm encouraging people to, of course, pull over and take a picture of the pothole, don't do it while you're driving, because you could get a ticket, but to please utilize that piece of technology to also help in reporting potholes. Also, I am looking forward to having further discussions about another special population in our community, and that's veterans. Moreno Valley has about eight thousand veterans, and this particular group, like many others, has its own dilemmas when transitioning to the civilian environment. But the difference is that if you've been honorably, if you honorably served in the military, you are tied to federal benefits in the form of GI Bill, VA home loan, and many other veterans' benefits. And so I'm looking forward to introducing a concept that would make Moreno Valley a lot, we're already doing a lot of great things for veterans, but to make it the best, most veteran-friendly city in the state of California. And I hope to not only get my fellow city councilmembers' support, but the community's support on that.
Thank you, and of course, we'll support you. Councilman Marquez.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad we're able to approve the, the more motors for our police department. So Chief, you got some new motors coming out, so that'll be nice. Just see if we can keep them on there instead of them falling off. Anyways, that's, that joke goes way back with, with our old chief. This Saturday is Public Safety Expo. I encourage the whole community, come on out and see what our public safety is all about. Every year, this, this grows every year. Come on out, meet these officers, the firemen, even the dogs will be out there, K-9 units, and they, they all have demonstrations out there. And it's really nice. You get the fire department and they get those jaws of life and just unbelievable to see when they tear a car apart. You don't see Mercedes out there, you only see the old junkers, right? Chief League? But come on out, it's going to be a wonderful day, I don't think there's going to be rain, but there's vendors out there, the, the military will be out there, we get people from the base out there. Come on out and enjoy yourself, you'll enjoy it. Next one is A ten, that property that, that was on the agenda tonight. I spoke, I sat down and spoke to the, the prospect out there, the, the developer, I think, Rick and I sat down with him and we talked about it. This developer is really sincere in building something there. He's had an eye on this property for a long time, but since we couldn't do anything with it, he wants to, to build something on that property. We need, we, we need things out there in the East End, we need these, these open lots to be filled with, with something out there. And this developer investor, he really wants to work with the city, so I hope we're able to work with him and get something developed out there. The homeless, we can talk about it, talk about it until our faces are blue. This is a national crisis, it's not local crisis. Unfortunately, you have two types of homelessness out there. You have the mental disturb, and that comes along a lot with your veterans, then you have the, the homeless that don't want to do anything but want a free handout. So the city of Moreno Valley, we have worked very, very hard, my colleagues up here, we, we know what it needs to, to take to try to solve this problem, but you know, it's, it's not an over the night. So we, we are really, really looking at that homelessness. We talked about the fire trucks messing up our roads. That's why we need to get some more squads out there, so these fire trucks don't go out on all the calls. We get these paramedic squads out there and they won't tear up our roads. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And yeah, hopefully, we can figure out the whole situation with Roy Blackard and his emails. I get them as well, so I, I don't know what's happening there. Regarding the, the roads, once again, I'm really happy, because Michael Wolf, you know, I'm constantly emailing you, hey, pothole here, pothole there, and you guys go out and take care of it. There was one on Cactus going toward the two fifteen. It was probably filled three or four times, and finally, you guys just did a patch, and that took care of it right there. So thank you guys for that. And, and you know, we're working with what we have, we're working with what we're getting from the state. And last year, we went above and beyond and we allocated a million out of our reserves that staff helped to get here to fix more roads. So we're trying, we're doing everything that we can to fix the roads here in Moreno Valley. It's not an excuse or anything, but you know, I grew up in LA and I go out toward LA every now and then. Roads out there are much worse than here in Moreno Valley. And again, it's not an excuse, but, but we're working on fixing these roads and they're going to get better. We just need a little bit of time, and hopefully, that rain is a little bit nicer to us in the near future. Regarding the, the homeless, homelessness and the youth shelter, you know, just seeing, seeing our youth come out here and having that courage to come up to the mic and speak out in public, you know, that takes a lot, especially for them who are in, at the high school age, and, and it takes courage to do that. And so I'm really happy to see them come out here, because it's just one example of something larger that I see happening across the country, really a movement, something that I believe we haven't seen in decades, you know, going all the way back to the sixties, where, where youth are finally starting to stand up, the changes coming from the bottom up, putting pressure on us elected officials to make policy changes and, and do things a little bit differently and see things differently as well. They give us new ideas, and so we're able to make better decisions. And at the cops and clergy meeting yesterday as well, thank you, Chief, for coming out as well. It was a really good meeting because both sides were able to understand each other better. And we, we really, we really need to communicate with each other. One of the things that came up was, you know, our police officers see things out there on the street that a lot of us can't even fathom, that we can't even imagine. Like they see some really, some really bad things out there on the street. And so we, we need to take that initiative as people, as residents, as citizens, to go out of our way to talk to our police officers as well, so that we know what to look for, what to identify. And, and so that conversation we had yesterday was really, really good. As far as the youth shelter itself, definitely, I agree with Councilmember Thornton. We, we, we should definitely try to build on the relationship we have with Operation Safe House. And if we can, without involving the city, as much as possible, use outside organizations, like I mentioned, the, all the unions, even private sector contractors, the churches, there's a lot of people out there who are willing to help with this, where it would not cost the city almost anything. So if we can do that, in addition to working with Operation Safe House, definitely, definitely, I think we should pursue that. So other than that, you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunities out there, a lot of grants that come our way, and so it's just a matter of will. Doing, just, it's literally just a matter of will, like the homeless-to-work program, implementing something different and trying to figure out a way to make it happen. There's so many opportunities out there, you just have to knock on the door and it'll open. But if we don't knock, the door will never open. So that's all I have to say here tonight. I want to wish everyone a good night and thank you for a good meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. I just want to reiterate what, excuse me, I haven't coughed all night now, I had a cough. What's going on this Saturday, we have a great event, our Public Safety Expo. Parents, please, please bring your kids, no matter how old they are, there's, our, our police department will be there, our fire department will be there, all the, our first responders, our volunteers, come out, bring the kids, take pictures. Our police chief will be there, he'll be more than willing to take pictures with you so that you can have in your home, you could print the pictures with your kids and they can say, hey, you know, I took a picture with the police chief, our fire chief, our city manager, our city clerk, the council. And these are jobs that your kids can look to for the future. They can say, you know what, I'm going to be the next city manager in Moreno Valley. I'm going to be the next police chief. I'm going to be on the city council. These are opportunities that are here for you. So bring the kids, and if you don't have any kids, come without them. You know, just come and support the city, because this is an event that we're very proud of, and it's for you. It's, it's not for us, it's for you to come and see what's going on when it comes to public safety, which I know is very dear and very important to every single household in the city of Moreno Valley. So please come out, join us, photo ops, we'll have tents, I heard, and if it rains, bring an umbrella, bring a raincoat, bring some boots, but come out and support us. Thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned, it's eight thirteen PM. Thank you.